Jesse Schwartz.
It's a while ago.
It's been decided that the story group, yeah, to have it on display some.
Yeah.
It was what people saw when they came in. Cause I can remember coming out.
Represented E. Smith.
Right? Is that E. Smith?
When you came along the road, I can remember going out to technical.
Yeah. Yeah, part of the directions.
Well, okay, I will.
Well, I didn't hear what you said earlier.
I said, does that move what they have together? What if people doesn't want to have the name on it?
Oh.
We don't want to have them on there.
Yeah, I don't think they are any.
The Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A housekeeping item here, Mr. City Manager. I just want to make sure that we actually are being taped. Usually we see the, on the screen, the evidence that we are live. Are we?
We are. The other two screens are on.
Got it. Okay, just wanted to make sure before we get started too much that we're good. We're actually being recorded in live. Thank you so much. So just a quick announcement about open podium, an invitation actually. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting, which typically occur on the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. We just learned technologically that these screens are supposed to be turned on. It's, yeah, good. We got that one under control. All right, council, approval of agenda. Does anyone have any items to add? Council member reports or something to our agenda this evening? Okay, is there someone that would make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Sir, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Minutes. We have the minutes of the workshop held last Tuesday, September 6th, and also our regular meeting. Anyone have any questions about either of the minutes? And if not, if you could put them together into a motion?
Move to approve the following city council minutes.
I'm not sure you're on.
I'll try again. Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. City council meeting held Tuesday, September 6th, 2022.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay. Again, anything that you wish to question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, the consent calendar. Again, these items are usually perfunctory, but often, or sometimes, there's an item that we wish to learn a little bit more about. Does anyone have any questions about any of the items A through M?
I have a question.
Council member Toomey.
On item K, it's authorize agreement with WSB for design and construction documents for Flying Red Horse monument. I was just wondering if we could get some clarification on the mobile name that's going to be on that?
Sure. Why don't we, before I turn it to Mr. Lothammer for a little explanation, just say to the public that, and I'm not sure the beginning of the years, Mr. Lothammer, you might know, but I know from the 30s and 40s, I guess, that this Flying Red Horse set at what was called the Y at the time, when people would drive into Eden Prairie from Minneapolis, the road would literally Y and it would go off on what is today Flying Cloud Drive and what is today the Ring Road to the left. And the two roads then would separate and you would make your decision to choose to go one way or the other. But people for generations, decades, saw that as the symbol, hey, we've arrived in Eden Prairie. So that historic Flying Red Horse, which was a mobile symbol, was donated to the city and we've been looking for a great site to display it. So with that background, Mr. Lothammer, if you could tell us a little, relating directly to Ms. Toomey's question about having actually a company brand, I guess, on a historic symbol?
Yeah, and you're correct, Mayor Case. It was 1936 when it was first put there. We, in 2013, the council accepted it as a gift from the Schwartz family. The Schwartz's, many generations had owned that property, that gas station, the Y Cafe, and that had sat on top of the building. In 2013, we were really excited and thought that it wouldn't take us very long to find a good location for that. And so we met multiple times with, usually it was a joint meeting of the HPC and also the Parks Commission. There were many opinions on the sign, the locations, the content, the level of restoration, but we did come to a conclusion and then have since been looking for a location for it. And as you heard about tonight at the workshop, that location, that is very, very close to its previous site, essentially across the street from Best Buy is where this would be located. But the mobile, the Flying Red Horse itself, underneath it, it says mobile. And one of the suggestions, or kind of the prevailing suggestion, was not to kind of disturb the authenticity of the sign because if interpreted correctly, and which we think by doing it in the location and the type of sign that it will be, it is more of a display and not necessarily an advertising method. People will be able to understand that this is historic and a historic sign, almost like if you saw the old Coke sign or some of those things. It's more of a outdoor museum piece and less of advertising for a specific product. So that was the direction we came out from multiple commission meetings. The action item tonight is actually to work with this landscape, architecture, and engineering firm to do a couple of things. One is to do the site grading plan, construction documents, and then also the restoration specifications for the sign and the base of the sign. So in a lot of cases, you'll remember back to our entry monument signs. We have to treat this very similar to somewhat like we did the soaring birds and make sure that it's structurally able to withhold this large metal monument.
Great. Yes, council member Ryan.
Yeah, I have a question. So are we going to have a description of the history, how important, how underneath the monument? Something so people drive by, they can go read it rather than calling or looking up somewhere else?
So two pieces to that. I think the rendering, the photo that you saw tonight at the workshop also said Town Center Plaza. And that's important to identify that location and to also identify some of the wayfinding of the town center area that has been being developed over time. But there's also two interpretive signs that are a part of the plaza that people can go up and read. When this goes up, we've seen a lot of media attraction to it, especially local media, just when it was donated. As we did a little more research to it, it gained more media traction. I think this is going to gain that and we'll be able to also tell that story of the history really well.
Thank you. And I just want to commend our several volunteer citizen commission groups that did spend years basically vetting this. And I feel like they really worked hard to land on a balance on how historically pristine do you restore it to at extreme cost versus functionality, practicality, but making it still be significant and look similar. So the big question of, you know, if you'd restored it to neon lights, tremendously expensive. These are LED lights, tremendously not expensive. So I think they landed well. And again, I think all the citizen groups to decide, you know, how to restore it where it goes, how to kiosk it, how to, you know, explain the historic significance, they really did a good job. So thank you to all of them. I just want, again, people listening in to always realize that we may make some final decisions up here, but there's a whole lot of community involvement that often, if not all the time, goes into some of these larger decisions, which we deeply appreciate, but also it gets a lot of voices involved. And vets the process quite well. Council member Toomey, anything else you wanted to address with that?
No, no, I think it's going to be great. I just had a question about the.
Yeah, I appreciate you raising that. And thank you.
Mayor, if I could just elaborate just a little bit more, what you're seeing tonight is the design piece for it and also the specifications and construction documents. So thinking of it as some of our usual projects, whether it's a building project or a road project, this is for them to put materials together that we can then go out to bid and receive quotes back from contractors. This will not happen anytime sooner than June at best case scenario. This, the property currently is under the control of the contractor for the LRT and they need to give it back to the project office who needs to release it back to us. And they're telling us as soon as they could do that would be June of this next year. So this is getting us ready to be able to get everything prepared, but we're not in a position to move forward.
And it's LRT controlled property, or the contractor they're using. And just to let people know that even though LRT itself may not, the trains may not run till 2027, the infrastructure across Eden Prairie will be, probably the vast majority of it will be completed, we believe, even by the end of this year, not early into next year. And with this sign will go in prior to trains running. We just wanted people to know that. All right, any other items to question within the consent calendar? Therefore, is there a motion to approve items A to M on the consent calendar?
Move to close the public hearing.
No public hearing. Nope, we're on the consent calendar. Yep, above that.
Oh, shoot. Went down to look at this other thing.
You got to the end of the consent calendar and we need to go back to the beginning of it.
Move the consent calendar items A through M.
All right, sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, we do have two, it seems like fairly perfunctory housekeeping of sorts. Important nonetheless, public hearings this evening. Council, uh, count, no, city manager, Mr. Geto.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We do have two updates to City Code, Chapter 11, so that requires public hearing. And the first one is actually a new opportunity for our retailers to be able to have more events on their property and they're on their property. So our community development director, Julie Kleema, has a brief presentation to give you about this code amendment. And then, again, it is a public hearing and we ask that you approve a first reading tonight.
Mr. Chair, members of, or mayor, members of the council, sorry, my mistake. I have a brief presentation on the code amendment regarding temporary sales events. This is something that the city has brought forward in response to requests by Shields in particular. But if I could have the PowerPoint up on the screen, thank you. The temporary sales events, as Mr. Geto mentions, provides retail businesses an additional special event option. So right now, businesses by City Code are allowed the opportunity to have temporary outdoor displays. So businesses tend to use those more for bedding plants and garden centers and those types of things that you see primarily at Eden Prairie Center in the Target, J.C. Penney's parking lot area. With the proposed language, this additional opportunity would allow every commercial parcel for events per year up to four days per event, including setup and takedown. The size of the outdoor sales event area would be based on the overall floor area of the business. So there would be some limitations put in place in order to manage the amount of area that would be dedicated to this. What is unique about the temporary sales event is that it does not propose any restrictions on the parking impact. So for instance, the outdoor display areas are required to be outside of any required parking areas. This would, because of its limited timeframe and nature, would allow the opportunity to have some impact on those required parking areas. It would also be required to only sell the type of merchandise that is sold in the store. So for instance, if you sell fishing poles in the store, you can sell fishing poles outside in the outdoor sales event. Multi-tenant sites, so if you've got a property that has one parcel but multiple tenants, that would require some management of those events because there is a limitation on the number of events per year. So the property managers would need to be involved in handling that. So for instance, with Eden Prairie Center, there are six parcels that comprise Eden Prairie Center. If this amendment were passed, an event could be held at Eden Prairie Center for about 24 weekends per year. So about half of the time, there could be something on those individual properties. That's not to say that each property would propose to take advantage of that, but there would be that opportunity. Staff proposed the parameters that are listed in the code amendment that I talked about briefly because special events can be a bit of a slippery slope. So there was a desire to balance the opportunity for additional business events and promotion of local businesses without detracting from the established high commercial standards that the city does have. That is primarily where the language that requires the materials or goods that are sold in the store is what is sold outside. So if you don't sell hot tubs in your store, you wouldn't be able to sell hot tubs in your parking lot. So staff is proposing this additional option for the council's consideration and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Counsel. Yes, council member Freiberg.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I got a question. Julie, this 4%, it's an interesting number. How did that come up? The logic behind it?
Mayor, members of the council, as a part of staff's research, we took a look at other local or regional communities that house regional malls. And we also took a look at what the standards are for the current temporary outdoor display area. That's limited, I believe, to 2%. So this allows a little bit of additional area, but again, we're talking about our smaller timeframe that the outdoor sales event could be allowed. So staff also went through and identified several different parcels in properties that have different sized buildings on them in order to get an understanding of how much area could be impacted by this in order to make sure that at a staff level, we felt comfortable that there, while there might be some impact to the required parking, that it wouldn't cause broader circulation and other types of issues.
Now, I'm just thinking again, a second question, along same lines. Okay, you mentioned Shields. I think I got square footage about right. Is that somewhere about 200,000, how many square meters, like in Shields, all floors?
150,000.
How many?
250,000.
So I was right, I was guessing 200. Okay, so they could go 10,000 feet outside, adding it all together?
Mr., oh, mayor, members of the council. So as I said, this request is really prompted by a request, particularly by Shields, as a desire to have some of these outdoor events. So in working with what Shields does in their other locations and understanding impact to not only the Shields property but other commercial properties in Eden Prairie, that size and that ratio seemed appropriate in order to meet both the city's concerns as well as the business needs.
So Mark, if I'm doing my math right, 10,000 square feet, so that's 100 times 100, so that's a third of a football field by a third. So I mean, we're not talking a huge amount out there, but it would be a significant, you know, it might not block tons of traffic.
50 by 20, yeah.
Yeah, or something. Right, right. I had a question about, so say the mall, Eden Prairie Mall has a huge festival in May or something and they have every store involved. So across the entire mall, every store gets their little 4% section. It would take up, it would be fun. I mean, I think it's probably not a bad idea, but parking would be tremendously impacted, I'm assuming, because you'd take the square footage of basically the entire mall, or at least the retail spaces added together, and you'd take 4% of that and then all these booths and, again, it could be a lot of fun. But I mean, have we anticipated that we could handle that or that the mall could handle that?
Mayor, members of the council, as a part of the research that staff conducted in looking into this, we certainly did look at the potential of multiplying or having multiple events occurring at one time. And because there are six different parcels that are in existence at the mall, staff didn't have any concerns about that at this point.
Good.
So.
Council member Ryan.
Thank you. So similar thought, say if you have like a strip mall, which is usually have, you know, very long, multiple units, then you have a couple of parking space in the front of it, maybe on the back of it. Those scenario, will be okay? Just wondering.
Mayor, members of the council, so if I can have the screen, I'll show a couple of examples. So Eric's Bikes is the example on the far left. So you can see the area in blue, that is the amount of area that 4% is depicted there. Shields, again, there's the 4% depicted in blue. And then Kowalski's is another example. So as you can see, the 4% is very manageable from an impact standpoint with regard to the parking.
So I'm not sure you answer my concern. So think about like Dollar Store, you know, we were talking today, that's a strip mall, right, street? And it has, where the Champs area, there is more parking, but the other end is smaller. So the Dollar Store and I don't know what other stores in there, if they all decided to do same time, are we going to have any parking issue would be there?
Mayor, members of the council, because it is managed on a per parcel basis, so the Dollar Store and Petco, I believe, are on the same parcel. So they would only be able to have four events per year. They could have an event at the same day or same time that Champs does, but again, they would be limited to that 4%. So we would certainly, as a part of an administrative permit that they would be requesting as a part of this, take a look at where is the specific location that the sales event is located? What would be the impacts to circulation? And we'd work with them to make sure that they're not designed in such a way that there would be some conflict.
Sound like a great idea. I just, I just wondering some of the different scenarios that impact the residents. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
I have one question.
Member Nelson.
Would they ever be able to, instead of having stuff sold from inside, might they donate one of their things to something like a Bloodmobile or a nonprofit? Or would that take a different change to the code?
The code as it's written does not discuss philanthropic events. It just is limited to the sale of merchandise that is sold inside. Now, if city staff received a request, I think we would take a look at that from an administrative standpoint and there might be some flexibility with regard to that. Or in the future, if we see a lot of those requests coming in, we could also come back with a code amendment to build additional flexibility into the code.
Can't a Bloodmobile now be brought in by Target or somebody just as a philanthropic nonprofit initiative?
We haven't necessarily seen Bloodmobiles coming in.
It's a metaphor.
As a specific example, right, but something similar. At this point, as those requests have come in, we don't have a special event allowance in code. We only have the temporary outdoor display, which at the mall site, for instance, is already utilized in mostly its entirety by the garden center. So they don't, by code, have an option to do something like that. With this, there might be some additional flexibility to consider that.
I mean, I would certainly like to see that potential. I think you felt that too. You and I talked about this. Two council members can chat about something no more prior to a meeting. Kathy and I talked about this. But I do think that the social service concept, again, I guess there could be some abuse in that, but I can't imagine at the moment that, to me, that if a Bloodmobile wants to move around from different locations for a couple of weeks throughout the city, that's a really good thing. And if it's sitting on the very edge of the Menards parking lot one week and then at the very edge of the Home Depot the next week, I don't, I don't see an issue in that. And I'd like to see code have that flexibility. What are anyone else's thoughts?
Well, Mayor, I think I've seen that already.
Well, that's my thought. I think we're, maybe, maybe it's out permission though. Maybe it's not technically within our code and they're just doing it?
Yeah, I guess I didn't know, yeah, I always thought they could just go, you know, whatever the arrangement is with the, whether it's the retail or.
Right, right.
That they just showed up.
Really quick, Mayor, counsel, I think the philanthropic piece, we do get those requests and I think we vet those not through the sales piece. So we have had some philanthropic events that we've allowed. I think the Bloodmobile piece is typically, we're familiar with that, familiar with that in more of an office setting or a setting where people have actually signed up in advance. So you'll see those in industrial parks or office areas. I don't know retail, if you set up in a retail space.
There are walk-in, like at state fair, I mean, there are walk-in places.
Could be.
So I'm, I guess I would not want us to in any way rule that out or have our code in some way restrict. But again, I want to make sure that we're flexible enough not to be abused or to be agile enough to be ready in case a problem arises. Okay, counsel, anything else? This is a public hearing. I can open it up and we can always chat afterwards if you wish. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on this code amendment? Okay, counsel, go ahead and close the public hearing then. And if you want, go ahead and make the motion. We can continue conversation about it.
I'll move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 11, relating to temporary sales events.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Geto, our second public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more in the housekeeping side of things, sign code update. I believe also our community development director is going to give a brief update prior to this public hearing as well.
And I have to say, the wonderful flowers sitting, go ahead and put the camera on to Julie. The flowers to her left there are for our wonderful administrative, I don't even know, your assistant is not high enough. You, I forget your title, something, executive vice president, something?
Sure, you can go with that.
Katie has been just fantastic to be with the city over the years and she is leaving to, leaving us to take really an advanced position with another city, another county, I guess, actually. Not just rising up in position, but going up to a county. So we will miss you, but the flowers are for Katie, so. Julie, you're enjoying them though, go ahead.
Yes, they smell beautiful. They smell beautiful. So I do have another brief PowerPoint to share with you outlining the signed code amendments. So as we have talked in the past, both at previous council meetings and workshops, there are several signed code amendments that are a part of a phased project in order to bring our sign code in, not only make it more user friendly and clear, but also to update it. So the first piece of that was the content neutral signs. That code amendment went through and was approved by council earlier this year. Where we're at right now and what we would like to speak about this evening is updating the office sign regulations. As you might recall, in 2021, there were several sign variances that were requested and they were all requested to the office standards. That's an indication that our sign regulations for office need to be a bit updated. So we'll talk a little bit more about that this evening. We're also proposing some changes to the RM 2.5, which is the High Density Residential Zoning District, to allow some additional flexibility and visibility for those properties. And then also establishing some sign regulations specific to the town center and the TOD zoning districts because those do have a different purpose than some of our more traditional zoning districts. We also are, in the future, we'll be back with some more general housekeeping and clarity improvements to make the zoning ordinance a little bit more user friendly. So with regard to the office freestanding sign allowance, what the amendment proposes this evening is increasing freestanding signs in the office district from 50 square feet to 80 square feet. to 80 square feet on the primary street frontage. If there is a lot that has multiple street frontages, those other street frontages would continue to be allowed one sign per frontage at a 36-square-foot size. So the increase from 50 to 80 square feet is more in line with our commercial and industrial districts. Many of our office properties are kind of nestled in and amongst other commercial and industrial zoning districts. So what we found is the office properties really were at somewhat of a disadvantage from a signage standpoint, because the average resident driving by does not distinguish between those different zoning districts. So it provides that consistency. With regard to the wall signs, the current code allows for a one-size-fits-all sign size on walls. And what the code amendment proposes is more of a sliding scale, so the bigger the wall size, the bigger the sign. So the total square footage for that sign area could be divided among multiple signs, so long as the total square footage doesn't exceed that maximum sign area allowed. And that, again, applies to those facades that have a street frontage. Then moving into the RM 2.5 zoning districts, so currently code says that the multifamily residential districts can have one sign that is six square feet in size. That's not a very big sign in order to identify, maybe this is where the garage entrance is, or this is the name of the multifamily project. So we have researched other communities similarly situated and sized, and are proposing to increase that six square feet to 25 square feet per street frontage. That really would allow for some better scale of visibility on the site and flexibility for sign placement, because the proposed language allows a property owner to distribute that signage on the site as it sees fit, so long as it doesn't exceed the overall maximum allowed. And then lastly, moving into the town center and TOD areas, as I mentioned earlier, those zoning districts have unique purpose and characteristics from the traditional zoning districts. And even though those districts have been in place for quite some time, the sign ordinance has not been updated to address the individuality that is in existence with those districts. So what we have been doing is applying the standards to the best of our ability. With the proposed amendment, we would maintain the current commercial and office district allowances, oh, excuse me, wrong way, but we would provide some additional ways to use those allowed wall signage. So because the TOD and town center focus on a pedestrian-oriented environment, we would propose in the language that awning signs be allowed, and the awning sign would then count towards the building's overall total wall sign. You could also propose projecting signs. Again, that would count toward the building's total wall sign allowance, but the projecting sign could not be larger than 10 square feet in area. Neither the awning or projecting signs would be allowed to project more than four feet from the building, and must be about 10 feet above the ground in order to provide the necessary clearance and aesthetic value that is achieved through those areas. With regard to residential uses in the town center and TOD, you can see the table at the bottom of this slide talks about the first floor would be allowed a maximum sign area of 25 square feet. And then as the sign is placed higher up on the building, there would be a bit of a sliding scale in order to, again, create that proportionality, in order to make sure that it is visible. The ground floor square footage could not be added to the second story and above in order to create and add additional area to that sign. So the intention is really to have signage at that pedestrian level, but then also allow opportunity for signage higher up on the building to be visible from vehicular or other properties. And then we are also proposing additional freestanding signs with regard to A-frame or sandwich board signs, with limitations that they be 12 square feet per side, which is fairly standard. They must be placed on the site in order to continue to provide for a clear path for pedestrians on the sidewalk. One would be allowed per tenant, and it would be allowed in addition to the property freestanding sign. So while staff is proposing this in the town center and TOD, the language also is proposed to expand this to all other non-residential zoning districts, which, as we talked with our zoning compliance, zoning enforcement officer, there was a lot of support for that as well, from an enforcement standpoint. This overall code amendment was also shared with the chamber at one of their meetings within the recent past few months, and they were supportive of this as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel.
I've got a question. I think it goes back to the office. You had talked about being able to combine the various wall signs together, so in other words, you could have like nothing on two sides and one humongous sign. Is there any maximum size? Because we've always stayed away from the huge signs in Eden Prairie. It's made a very different look than what you find in many suburbs, and I, for one, don't want to lose that. So what are all the details? How big could they be? But if it comes up to being semi-small billboard-sized sign, then I'll have to vote no.
Councilmember Nelson, so the proposed office wall signage does include a maximum. So the second bullet point talks about this, in that the total square footage could be divided among multiple signs, so long as the total square footage does not exceed the maximum sign area allowed. And as I mentioned, in the office, that's a bit of a sliding scale, but I believe the max is set at 150 square feet. So they could redistribute that, but it could not exceed the 150 square feet.
Okay, well, that's important, because I've been around long enough to hear an awful lot of developers that really think they need something in the size of a billboard, especially if they're near a freeway. And it's really not what any of the other buildings in Eden Prairie have done, and that does create a look that's more Eden Prairie-like.
Great, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. So Counsel, should we go ahead and open it up, and then if you have more questions afterwards? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on this particular code amendment, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, go ahead and close the public hearing, and if you wish, go ahead and make the motion, and then we can ask for further discussion.
I will move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 11, relating to sign code.
Is there a second?
Second.
So any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Moving on to payment of claims, are there any particular expenditure items that you wish to question or comment on? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
Move the approval of a payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Norrigan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, Mr. Getcho, we have one item under ordinances and resolutions, and maybe if you wouldn't mind, just for like 10 seconds, explain why some code amendments rise to the level of requiring or needing a public hearing? Is that our choice as a state statute? And then why some are much more housekeeping?
Sure, that's correct, Mayor. This would be state law requiring most zoning codes that cities have, that for us, that's Chapter 11. Land use codes, zoning codes require public hearings. It is up to the different cities if they want to have different public hearings for their other ordinances, or vary the amount of readings that they do. So one thing I think is unique to Eden Prairie is every ordinance has multiple readings. So even if it is a perfunctory housekeeping item, it does show up on a future agenda for a second reading, and then it needs to be published. But I do know that some cities don't do two readings. So again, yeah, this is, this is related to city salt storage and our permitting for that, and that does not fall anywhere within anything related to zoning or land use. And Mr. Ellis can give a summary of this item.
Mayor Case, City Council, so again, this is a final provision of our recently reauthorized MS4 permit, the stormwater permit for the city. As I recall, if you recall, at our last council meeting, I talked about how the MPCA recently reauthorized for another five-year period of stormwater permit. And the final provision of that was that we adopt a ordinance that has to do with the outdoor storage of salt, or chlorides, really, so it can be any number of types of salts used for de-icing operations. So this was an ordinance recently passed in Edina, Minnetonka, and Plymouth, and as cities around the metro are going through their five-year permitting process, we'll see this adopted in all cities eventually. But tonight is for the city of Eden Prairie's ordinance, and really, it's a rather short ordinance. It simply requires that if salt or de-icing materials can't be stored indoors, which is a good housekeeping practice, and it must be stored outdoors, that have some type of a impervious cover over it, some waterproofing. And that would just prevent any rain, snow, water melt, or wind from carrying that salt away, because ultimately, it would make its way into our stormwater system, then into our wetlands, lakes, streams, or other water bodies. So it's a good housekeeping measure, too. I mean, there's a financial incentive to keeping that salt covered for the business owner. And we're not aware of anybody in Eden Prairie currently that doesn't cover their salt. There have been, over my 11 years here, maybe two property owners that stored salt outdoors. Most do keep it in indoors. So not that we're seeing an epidemic of this, it is more a requirement of our PCA's MS4 stormwater permit. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Counsel, if no questions, if someone wants to make the motion, if a question comes to mind, we can still have a discussion after we've made the motion and second it.
Move to approve the first reading of ordinance adding.
Go ahead.
City Code, Section 5.78, relating to storage of de-icing materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So one of the wonderful parts of technology is the ability that people that are watching this right now at home can, if they have my number, can text me. So I had an interesting question on a earlier discussion tonight that I think would be worthy of, at least, Mr. Getcho, if you could have someone from staff at least answer. I think, Julie, it would be you. Regarding, we have several gun stores in town. So regarding the 4% of their parking lot, so could they sell guns out in their parking lot?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to take a stab at answering that, but I believe that the federal regulations regarding gun sales would govern in that scenario, so that's something we'd have to take a look at and research a little bit more.
Okay, that would be good to know ahead of time, proactively, just because I think there are residents on all many sides of that issue, right? But there are residents that would be more concerned about that possibly, so I'd like to know that ahead of time, proactively. So thank you. And thank you that people watch this at home and have my phone number, so. All right, is there anything else to come before the city council this evening? Mr. Getcho, Counsel? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting is adjourned.